Alrighty, we'll get the meeting started here. Starting with a call to order and roll call. So I'll go through, starting. Jessica Marion.
Here.
Trevor Groot here. Jessica Sheldon.
Here.
Doug Curtis here. Greg Zoller.
Here.
And that is it. You good there, Lois?
I'm good. I'll be right.
Okay, and I need a motion for the consideration of the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Zoller. Motion by Zoller.
Marion.
Marion. Is.
All those in favor.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
There's no public, so you can go to number four.
So the motion is carried.
We ought to do it on the planning commission.
We.
You skip it?
If there's no public, correct.
Yeah, you can just say motion carried, since there was no nays.
Okay.
I'm trying to help him.
I know, I'm gonna like do the planning commission, I always do it, maybe Wally wants to get up and talk for two minutes.
No, he can't, he's.
He could talk about something else. So the motion for consideration of meeting minutes is carried, seeing as there's no public. Pass the public comments. And move on to the consideration of the meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November twenty-one, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried, made by Curtis, supported by Zoller. And is there any conflict of interest? That anyone would like to declare at this time? None? None, really looking for that or no? So now I'll move on to new business, this, we're here for a dimensional variance request for relief from section three point four five water course setback for six two 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 Thornapple River Drive. The applicant is seeking relief from the fifty-six point two five foot setback. Water course setback required per section three point four five and twenty-one point two of the zoning ordinance. His current deck, which is a pre-existing non-conforming, is setback thirty foot from the water course. And you'd like to build a larger deck that's setback twenty-four foot from the water course, six foot closer than current. Would you like to provide any comment?
Sure.
Perfect. Please come on up.
My name's Walter Boojak, I live at sixty-six thirty-nine Thornapple River Drive. Been a resident of Cala Doney Township for forty years. Like to start by thanking all of you for being on this board, I know it's a difficult assignment being the zoning board of appeals. Probably only one other board on this township that's more difficult, and that is the assessment board. I wouldn't want to be on that board myself, I know it's very difficult to be in these assignments. And appreciate you being willing to serve the citizens here, serve on this board. Just a quick overview of my request. I'm replacing, I'm asking to replace an existing deck that is structurally damaged. The deck had a, well, there's a sloping roof above the deck that had a very, very large ice dam that formed on it, and the ice dam came down in its entirety, so it was about a foot and a half thick and three feet wide, and when it came crashing down onto the deck, it damaged the boards, took out the rails, and more importantly, it damaged the main supporting structure that carries the load for the entire deck, so temporarily I have it shored up with a post to temporarily, you know, make it safe, but the whole structure needs to be replaced. And so that deck, the current size is seven feet by thirteen feet. Why it was built that size is probably the lumber they had available in the day when they built that. And I want to replace the deck and make it bigger, so seven by thirteen doesn't make any sense. And your standard sizes are eight foot and ten foot, so I was looking at a size of eight foot and determined that ten foot would be better, so that way I could put a table and chairs on the deck and still walk around the table and chairs with an eight foot deck and a table and chairs, it doesn't leave much room to traverse around the tables. The house is considered non-conforming because it's in a, due to the zoning, it's in R two and the lot is smaller than the zoning requires, so making this deck bigger would make the home more non-conforming, which is not allowed by zoning, so requirement that I be here before the zoning board of appeals. And additionally, the setback on the river with the current zoning is set at seventy-five feet and the deck that I'm asking to put on there does not meet that setback requirement. Before we get into the details of this request, I want to give a little background information on some of the things that I did in preparation for this meeting. I came to the township and spent a couple hours, two and a half hours actually, looking at the zoning board of appeal requests from the time period two thousand to two thousand and twenty-five, so twenty-five years worth of zoning board of appeal minutes and requests, took two and a half hours. I thought it was pretty good. Anyways, the purpose was to see if there had been any established precedences in any other requests similar to that which I'm making before you. And I found that there were eight requests during that time period. And it was interesting to note that all eight were approved by the zoning board of appeals.
Did you give us that information?
Pardon me?
Did you supply us with that specific information?
Oh no, I just did this yesterday or the day before? Day before yesterday. Anyways, and I could, I had, I took notes, you know, as to the specific cases where these water course setbacks were, inquiries were, were made of the zoning board appeals. Anyways, the, the reason for, given for approval in almost all the cases was that the hardship is not caused by the homeowner. So again, I found that kind of interesting. And then I decided to try to determine the root cause of all these requests. Why, why were there so many zoning board of appeal requests related to water course setbacks? And what I found was that most of the requests for ZBAs were related to either the Thornapple River or Camp Alkettle Lake. Or the Village of Alaska, so most of the homes in these locations were built prior to the year two thousand and when the current, and two thousand was when the current township zoning was adopted. And that's when the seventy-five foot water course setback was established. Camp Al Lake seems to have the most problems evidently, we didn't have a planner back in those days, and they built the houses very close together and they built the houses close to the lake. And as far as the homes that were built on Thornapple River Drive, you have in many cases Thornapple River Drive, the road in between, you have the road and the houses in between the road and the river, and so there's not very much space between the road and the river, in some cases the road goes right up to the rivers, you're well aware. And then also, oh, and in those cases where the houses were built on Thornapple River Drive, there's high bluffs on the river and the homeowners with, that built the homes there had a desire to have a view of the river, and to do that you needed to move the house as close as you could to the river's edge without, you know, making it a safety hazard. So the houses are built too close to the river. Hence the need for the zoning board of appeal requests, if they do any remodeling or do any deck additions. And also, those homes have the same zoning problems that I have with R two in that they don't meet the, the lot size, most of those homes don't meet the lot size, which makes them non-conforming and of course, making, adding an addition or making the deck bigger would cause, be a cause to make a non-conforming situation more non-conforming, hence the need for zoning board of appeals. More specifically, in my case, the house in question at sixty-six sixty-two, and I left in the, in the package for you a map showing the plat of the Village of Alaska, and I'll refer to this. Oh, I guess you do have. I'll refer to this here. This house in subject there is identified as lot three seventy-six. And this, this was platted, this entire, this entire plat was done in like eighteen forty-seven. So way before the current township zoning ordinance was adopted. And this entire village is in R two, so all the homes, pretty much all the homes in this particular area are considered non-conforming because they don't meet the R two minimum requirements for lot size. The deck that was put on the house, the deck that I'm planning on replacing was built approximately nineteen thirty-eight. So this deck has been on the house for eighty-seven years, and that's pretty remarkable. The only reason it lasted so long is because they made it out of redwood, which is a very good material to make out of, but it can't last forever. And then of course, the ice coming down on top of the deck didn't help it with its age. If I simply replaced the deck the same size and made it seven by thirteen, I wouldn't be here before you. So the zoning allows me to replace the deck, but because I want to make the deck larger, I'm taking my non-conforming situation and asking to make it more non-conforming, hence the need to be here. The reason I wanted to make it bigger is, I gave you part of that reason, because I want to put a table on the deck, but I also want to make the deck wrap around from the north side to, or from the west side to the north side so that I can utilize both doors, there's a door on the north end of the house and a slider, or a door on the west end of the house and sliders on the north. And right now there's no way, they're, they're not connected. And to get better use of those ingress and egress opportunities, I wanted to have a deck that connects from both points of entrance and exit. So the deck will be higher than the existing deck, right now the, the deck that's on that house, when you, when you leave the house, you have to step down onto the deck, it's down about eight inches. And I've desired to move that deck up and raise it up approximately eight inches. And also have a plan to put a cupola on the deck, and that'll keep ice from coming down off the roof and damaging the new deck. So that's the proposed concept. I've already applied for and received a soil erosion permit from the county. Pending the ZBA approval, I will be applying to the township for building permit and also electrical permit. So I'd like to put some electrical plugs on this deck. The main concern here is the water course setback. And if you look at my exhibit A, so what I did is I took the property survey and on that property survey you can see the existing deck right here, this is seven foot by thirteen. And what I did is I took the water course edge and I measured back seventy-five feet, and I drew this line here to show where that seventy-five foot setback is from the river. And you'll see that there isn't anything on that property that meets the requirement. The entire property is non-conforming with the seventy-five foot setback. And in my exhibit B, that would be the next one. What I'm showing here is that with the existing deck, the distance from the corner, the nearest point of that deck to the edge of the river is currently thirty feet. And what I'm asking to do, and I drew a line here showing what a ten foot deck would look like, where, where that intersecting point would be. The distance from the closest point to the river would be twenty-four feet with a ten foot addition of a deck on the backside. And so I also have in that package this drawing showing the two existing platforms, this being the deck that we're discussing right now. And then this is the north egress and ingress egress on the house. And with with the proposed deck, you'll see this orange area and also a small entry platform here on this end of the house. And this is, this is what I'm proposing to build onto this deck pending the approval of the CBA. So that in a nutshell is my request. And I'm ready for questions.
So I was out there, Wally, we measured every way, both my son and I, and from the corner of your current deck, I get twenty-six feet, not thirty.
Pardon me?
Twenty-six feet from this corner to the water's edge.
It is?
Not thirty. But that being said, let's try to work out something for you, but it's not thirty feet. So we measured multiple times.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that.
So I'm looking at all this the part, you want to go an extra approximately four feet on the, we'll, we'll call it the north side of the property, you know. Is it six feet?
Yes.
Or three?
No, 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 from, so your existing side door on the north side.
This, this end here?
Yes, this is about four feet wide, right?
Yes, each block's two feet.
Yes, that's what I thought. So if you weren't to do that and you ran from the edge of the house out and cantilevered it, because you have a retaining wall. So your retaining wall is going to be a problem too. You know, you have a retaining wall right at the, where your current deck is.
Yes.
So, and I can see where they, there's been a lot of updates and repairs done over the years and, you know, because you got concrete purlins in there and metal plates. So there's been things that helped that keep them on, but, you know, my thought is, you know, if you, we're at twenty-six already, if we go out another, so I'm going six feet plus three, we're going to be really close, you're going to be in the high water mark with your posts with what you're proposing.
That was my.
Yes, the posts will, the posts are planned to be what they call perma posts, which are concrete, they're concrete pillars.
All concrete up to the deck?
Oh no, no, it's concrete two, about a foot above, so it'd be.
Those are going to be in the high water though, that's my, you know.
There are, there would be some potential for that to happen, yes.
So do you really need that walkway?
A what?
Do you really need that walkway between the north stairway and, you know, to the deck?
Okay, so a walkway, something.
Here.
Do you need this?
Yes.
Do you need it?
Yes.
You don't have it currently?
No.
So we're trying to get you there, that's why.
Okay, right, yeah, and that's, that's what I was proposing, that I'd be able to take the door on that north side or on the west side and be able to go out that door and walk over to the back deck, yes.
You'd like to do it?
Yes.
Can someone help me understand how often in a season the river comes into?
Four or five times?
Right, so it's, it's pretty often?
Onto that, to the, to the backyard? Well.
We were lucky this spring so far because we didn't have a huge meltdown.
Right, but it can be pretty significant.
There are occasions when water will go onto that flat and it's, it's not frequent, it's, I think, four times in the last twenty-six years. It's certainly not desirable, makes a real mess. It's very temporary, usually lasts a day or two and then, and the water level goes back down.
I have a few questions slash comments. One, my initial thinking was it's a bigger issue, Lois, being on the planning commission, why we have different setbacks between the river and the lakes. I think we need to address that issue so we don't have two different standards, because really between, let's call it north of the Eighty-Fourth Street Dam, it's pretty well controlled, but it does flood at times. I mean, I've lived here for twenty, along that area where I drive into work and see it flooded from time to time, but I do think we should have some sort of continuity between rivers and lakes, just to make it easier for the citizens. You said that you had reviewed the ZBA meeting minutes over the years. Were any of those instances specific to decks that were on the houses?
Most were additions that were being added. Didn't really write down whether they were a deck or not.
Alright, Jessica, you asked my question about how close the water is. Greg and I differ a little bit on this, I I'm willing probably to give a little bit more than what Greg is on the, let's call it, the north side. It's, it's a weird direction there.
Yeah.
This.
This is north.
I'm probably a little, I'm, I'm like, probably keep the existing distance out to that point. Because this, almost all this distance can be cantilevered, sorry, let me get further than like. A lot of that distance can be cantilevered out in keeping the post back, therefore the deck is up and the posts aren't apt to get to the water. I can appreciate the wanting to connect it around, again, not a hill I'm going to die on, but I think, you know, limiting the post to the, more or less the existing location away from the house and if it's cantilevered out.
Okay, I see what you're, I see what you're, now I understand what you're talking about, cantilevering, not putting the post out here, but putting the post back here.
Right, and that way with the walkway, that's what's causing the dilemma, because you're going to have two posts, most likely two posts in the.
In that area.
Of flooding.
Because I think you can get your distance out, I mean, you'll have to get some, I mean, you won't use a four by four post, you may have to use a six by six and some two by twelves to get it out there. Structurally, I'm not a mechanical engineer or structural engineer to be able to tell you what that would be. I think you can get your depth out from the house that you want by keeping your posts back. And is this a matter of, it's like one or two posts that we don't walk away from the mic?
There's probably two.
You're going to have to have something here, something here and something in this area, which this one doesn't bother me nearly as much as this one.
That one's the one that's bothering me.
This is the one that's causing my big angst, right? Not this one, I don't think there's a, you know.
So, okay, so.
I'm not going to burn a couple of feet, but that's.
Am I hearing you say that the request is that any posts for this particular plan need to be back behind the existing retaining wall, is that what you're saying?
I think that, you know, or right in that vicinity. And, you know, you can, with a two by twelve, you can get up to four feet of cantilever.
Okay.
So if you kept, so you're at seven, you go to eleven. You know, do you, do you want to go bigger towards the garage side of your property?
And that other end up there?
Yes.
No, this, okay.
Right here. No, 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 we're back on this main deck. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with this, with this far foot walkway.
It's not wide enough?
No, I'm not comfortable with that post being that close to the water. You're going to have to have a post, at least one.
Yeah, he's talking this post.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Because it's not actually twenty-four feet, what you're saying is it's actually
If this is twenty-six.
It's going to be even less, because right now it's twenty-six feet.
To this point.
From our measurement, it says thirty, but we kept measuring it twenty-six.
So then it's actually twenty feet from his, based on his, like it would.
Could he be less?
Wouldn't it be less? Nineteen? Because he was going from thirty to.
Not having, not having shown the wall there.
Your wall is.
Not sure where that post is going to be, but I, I think that, I think that wall is parallel to that, to the deck line.
It, it's, your posts are right on, right, right behind the wall or right on.
Right behind the wall, correct. So if that comes out to four, six more feet, there's a little walk, there's, um, steps that go down there on that side, I don't know where, I'd have to look at that and see, hmm, where is that post gonna be?
Yeah, your current steps are. And you're gonna get rid of, you're gonna get rid of one set of steps and move them to the south, it looks like. So right now the walkway is in the, right about in the middle.
Yes.
Going down.
Yes.
You're eliminating that.
Yes.
Then you're going to the north. Did you wanna go to the north, or I mean to the south? Would you wanna go to the south farther for your stairs? Get your deck so you can go ten, eleven feet? All the way along the back of the house if you wanted to.
Yeah, I, okay, so, the original, okay, so these, this is the preliminary plans that I had drawn up. And actually, this plan does show the deck going all the way across the back, but the cost of doing that is, you know, a factor, so I'm modifying these drawings to, you know, go more to that concept right there.
Oh, so we can save you some money just getting rid of the four-foot there, make you happy.
Yeah, it just got more expensive on Monday, by the way, too.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I can live, I can live without the wrap, the wraparound would be nice just for, from a, from a visual of the house, to have that, you know, wraparound. I could live without that and just leave that, um, existing, you know, entrance and steps on the west end and not put the walkway, I, I could live without that.
So.
I wish I could see the retaining wall.
It's, it's right under this, and it goes a little bit farther, it's right, right at the deck.
Where does it come in the corner, to through the border?
It goes and it starts curving, correct?
Yep.
Starts curving right around the, right about here, correct? It starts curving right in there, and, but it curves tighter, doesn't it, Wally?
You're, are you talking about the retaining?
Yeah.
The retaining wall goes, it goes straight, it continues for another probably fifty feet, it goes straight. We might be able to see that on a satellite view if you pulled up a, do you have a GIS map?
I couldn't find it on, uh, Access Cat.
Oh.
Like, I couldn't, all I could see there was a shiny roof.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
But I, I was out there, and, um.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about, you know, I, I guess, you know, looking at what this, oops, looking at what this guy drew, you know, he was showing the posts, you know, out at the farthest edge of that deck design, and it would be down in the flat, and I never really entertained the thought of cantilevering, you know, having, you know, he's drawing the post like this and you're saying move the post back and do a cantilever, which is fine with me. And then the question is, if, if I'm trying to achieve that same concept on the far west end with that walkway, where is that, that post in the corner gonna be? And it would be, we would be talking about, okay, so if, let's say, these are the existing posts right here and here, so that post would be right there. An additional post for, for this four-way walk. The, the question that you're asking is, where is this, where is this wall that goes here?
I know it's under, it's under the, it's under the green right now, not out there. It's right at.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so, yeah, I'm just penciling that in there. Yeah, so, um, that wall is, I'm going to just draw a dashed line here like this. It does go out here like this and continue, this, this wall continues all the way down here. And where, and where that wall is in relation to this particular point here, I can't honestly tell you to have to, you know, measure that out from this corner here, four feet, and then go back to wherever this post is to see, will that fall still behind that, behind that wall? If, if this post with a cantilever concept, wherever that might be, falls in behind that wall, would that walkway then be acceptable?
It would be.
I would be okay if it was behind.
Behind the.
Behind the retaining wall.
I, I, and I understand, I understand the desire to keep those, um, posts and the post holes, you know, off from the, from that lower area in the yard, that, that, it does, it does make sense. And again, I hadn't considered a cantilever on this, so, um, yeah, I would have to, I would have to do some more, um, research to determine where, you know, where those cantilever points would be and how much, and would, how many feet you say you can cantle?
You can get four feet on twelves.
I think you can get four out of twelves.
Four and twelve.
Four?
I think.
With the two by twelve.
Was it two by twelve?
Joyce, two by twelve, Joyce, yeah.
Right, right.
I think.
I have four.
Do you?
Well, I'm not opposed to the concept and, and the materi, the materials are, you know, whatever materials would be necessary to meet those requirements are fine with me.
Probably save you money if you cantilever it.
Yeah, so, posts behind the existing, um, wall.
Yeah.
And a cantilever design. Well, what if, what if you were to, um, make a contingent approval based on, you know, that engineering being done, such as that post, if, if this walkway was to be considered, that this location for this post be structurally placed behind the existing, um, stone wall?
So do you wanna, could you ask to table this?
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna ask Lois just real quick, um, if we table it, doesn't have to be re-notice, we don't have to.
I don't believe so.
We don't have to do all that.
If you table it, when does this come back, another month?
It can be next month or it can be extended out further. I think it just has to be within one year, correct? To ta, when you table? To make the decision, when, when they do the.
I don't know, we've had stuff tabled a while.
I know extensions have to be done within a year, but if you wanna table.
I think we wanna understand, like, engineering wise, I think all of us are like comfortable with the, the posts behind the retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
Like, doing that, I mean, I don't think any, I mean, you're adding that deck, let's call it, to the south side. That end on your drawing.
We don't care about that.
We don't care about, I mean.
Okay.
Th- that's not a, it's really just where this post is gonna be.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern, and.
We don't wanna hold you up, but we also wanna make.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't really wanna table this, I'd, I'd rather, if, if I could get a either or conditional approval, in other words.
We, you'd have to come back to us though. You know, if you want a conditional that it has to be built behind and you'd have, you don't know you can do it yet. We have to have the, to know that's done. We can give you, we can give you an approval based on, those posts are gonna be behind, be behind the retaining wall, and if not, no permit. Then you'd have to come, apply for another variance if, if you couldn't do that, so.
Hmm.
We're not trying to hold you up, Wally, we're trying to, we're trying to.
Right, 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 no, yeah, I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to find a, um, an agreeable solution.
Right.
So that.
That's what.
I do have a couple of questions though also, the seventy-five foot setback, when was that set?
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, and Wally, when did you take possession of the?
Uh, two thousand and six.
Okay, so around the same time, and it's non-conforming, which we know. I guess I, I, I'm a little leery in regards to it, just because I was having reservations when we were going from a thirty foot to a twenty-four foot and knowing that we're going from twenty-six to twenty foot makes me even a little bit more leery in regards to it.
Well, if we have the post behind the retaining wall, that makes me feel much more comfortable from a standpoint of, he's, we're not gonna be here forever. You put this deck up, it could go to another family and, you know, and, uh, then they say, oh, they got a variance, but this deck that just washed away with, you know, everybody on it watching the river rise. You know, but if it's behind it, you know, we, I look at those things too, and.
Right, right, and I understand, safety should be, you know, a high regard.
You know, I'm not discounting your concerns.
No, I, I know.
I have a question, Greg, if, if I may, if that's okay. Um, so you're saying the post behind the retaining wall, is that where the posts are right now? Are they right behind it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Giving him a little bit of extra leeway?
We're gonna give him a, we're gonna give him a cantilever.
No, I understand that, but are you saying?
They are right behind.
He can extend, he can extend the deck up to ten feet if those posts are in the same place or at least the same distance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I have another question for you then, if you don't mind.
No, no.
Shush, I know. So this whole thing here, cause the original, the original measurement was from here, which you discovered is less than what we thought, right? So what if this walkway, so this post over here is the troublesome one, right? What if, you, you said it was for a walkway, right? So what if you come over, you know, you have, you have.
Don't square it off.
You have your deck, but just like square it off shorter, so it's actually a walkway to get here, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I see, so you're.
Cause this is extending this whole deck here.
So you're saying make, take this and eliminate this corner.
Well, if you're just, if your purpose is to get a walkway, then that might help with the, with the setback issue, that's.
Yeah.
Well, put a forty-five, put a forty-five.
But I don't know, that would work, but I just.
It, it would work. I didn't think about that one.
Mm-hmm.
Then you can go to the south more if you want to, Wally, if you're saving a couple bucks in that corner.
Yeah, okay.
But, I'm not sure you can guarantee us that you can be behind that.
And we don't wanna, and.
We, we don't wanna hamstring and have you pass again.
This, this post here would definitely be behind the wall for sure. So, a, a change to eliminate this section of the deck so that I still have achieved the walkway and I still have full use of the deck. This, this deck here, this space here, it, it's almost, um, what's the right word?
Wasted space?
Yeah, it's wasted space, cause you're not gonna, you're not really gonna put anything there, it just, it's just kinda hanging out there, nobody's gonna really.
Is, isn't that really?
Go sit in this corner.
Isn't that really where the variance request is coming from? Cause if you stay within what's already.
No, because he's still extending it out.
He's still extending it out. So, current post, if he built the same deck, we're not gonna say anything.
Couldn't, right, yep.
But, if he, if he cantilevers it, he's even closer.
Yeah.
So either way, but the cantilevers, we're not gonna see those posts behind.
You know, I actually, I actually like, I actually like the way this looks.
Thank Lois.
Better than this, this point, it, this is just like a lookout that's just hanging out there, no one's ever gonna use. And it's materials that, I mean, taking that corner off there to assure that this post is behind the wall, this post that we need here is behind the wall, that's certainly, um, from an engineering, you know, perspective doable, so I would be willing to do that, eliminate, eliminate this corner to assure that all posts used in this.
Retaining one?
Retaining, the, in the, or behind the retaining wall.
If, if we give you a conditional and you could, you end up, you can make it, but if you wanna, you can go, if you decide you wanna go farther south, I would give you that on your variance. So if you wanted to make this deck longer towards, you know, where your garage is, not this.
Oh, make it go this way?
If you decide you want to, go farther.
So it would be, it would be, alright, so looking, uh, let's, let's put this out there, this is, this is how that deck was drawn with a complete, you know.
So he's running the, he's running the, um.
So you, we're saying, you're saying allow it to come all the way out to here, just eliminate this, this section here so that we really don't, see this post here, we'll leave that post there.
Yep, and then all the.
Then all these other posts, all the other posts on the outside go in.
And all the other posts come in, correct? And so this doesn't show, this, on this doesn't show this deck.
He's got them on two by twelves already.
Yeah.
Somebody over-engineered this for you?
It wasn't going anywhere.
No.
Well, like I said, these were, this is a prelim, these are preliminary drawings based on the outcome of this meeting, so. I, uh, just wanted to start something so that we can look at, and basically.
Oh, see, on this side here.
This is what, this is what we're, what we would be looking at.
Can you zoom it out real quick, Lois?
Oh, sorry.
So this is what it would look like.
So that.
You wanna zoom to end zone?
Out, bigger picture.
So this bottom post is gonna go inwards.
Yes.
Keep going, please.
And across the back like that.
There. Can you flip it back to the, the page you just added on, please? That one, yeah.
So we're saying move these posts back here, so this is cantilevered. This stairway will actually be back further, cause it will, the stairway will be back. I didn't want it to stick out that far. They've got it drawn, um, right down the staircase, it's shown straight out from the sliders, that's not where I want it, I wanna move it, I wanna move it more.
Well, the farther you go to the south, the more waterfront, or remember, more.
More probably.
Farther away is from the water line, so that's not gonna, and that's can just flow.
But it would be based on that drawing, that's.
Yeah, but he's not.
Yeah.
But I do like, I do like the concept of taking this off here and going like this, and eliminating this corner. That corner really doesn't have any value to me.
I don't know that you can do that with the pergola.
And then this, this actually has a, a better, a better look than just a straight.
I don't know how you would do that with a pergola.
You can, you can cantilever it, cause he can, and his pergola. He's not gonna, he's not gonna have his pergola go, it, it can go all the way over there.
Yeah.
There's not much, there's no eight, there's just.
Really, this is, this, on this corner here.
Two by six, two by eights.
You know, where, where people are gonna put a table and chairs. This is just so we can get from here over here.
For the public carrying.
And this can actually be back. Where would this post, I don't, I don't know, the wall that.
We do it all the time, even if no one's there.
No, 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 no. I think we should.
Well, I think that's the right answer.
And I think we could have, it gives us enough time.
Wally, I know you don't like to hear this, but I think you should table it.
Get, get the drawings back, we have everything, you, you have the retaining wall shown, you, make sure you can do it, otherwise, you know, Murphy travels with his cousins and nephews and brothers and everything, and you'll have to come back and we don't want you to have to pay and go through the whole thing again, um. The, when's our next meeting, what else we could have?
Well, this is tabled, so we could do this next month if you like.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, that was, um.
April seventeenth?
Yeah, it was like the eighteenth or seventeen, um, April seventeenth.
Holy Thursday, right?
Yeah, Thursday. Could you be back then if you're stuck?
Uh, sure. Sure.
If not, then it'd be May.
I'm, I'm good with coming back, I can, you know, rework the plan and.
We just wanna make sure it works.
Yeah, and, and I get it.
Because otherwise you have to redo the application and.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm all good. This is how, you know, engineering goes, you come up with a concept and you go, oh, plan B. And, and it's kinda funny, my last name is Bojack and begins with B. My whole life, my whole life has always been about plan B, so. You know, this is not a, a real surprise to me, and I appreciate you, you know, being willing to work with me. And I, yeah, I'm okay with tabling this and coming back and then bringing back, um, uh, you know, a updated plan. That shows all the posts back behind that.
And, and show the retaining wall, I think that was.
Yeah, and show the retaining wall, right.
Yeah, I came up with seven feet approximately, it's from, from the foundation.
Okay.
At, at the top, so it's, I know it's, you know, it.
You mean, oh, for, for where those posts have to be?
No, so basically you're, you're around seven feet from your, from your foundation. You know, the, the bottom rocks are probably more like eight and a half, you know, cause it's stacked backwards, but that's probably what saved that house a few. Few times from, uh, some of those floods.
Well, that house has been there, like I said.
Right.
Um, over a hundred years and it, um, it's never flooded, the house has never.
No, not without retaining wall.
No, the retaining wall holds, holds the water back from, you know, from. And whoever built that house knew that, they, they put that wall there because, probably because some experiences that they had, you know, with the river and it's rising. And when I bought the house, the owner told me, oh, it never, you know, the only time that'll ever come up, you know, on that flat. Is, it's the hundred year rain, the hundred year flood. And I've owned the house for twenty-six years and four times, the water has come up on that. And when the water comes up, um, it's not like rushing, racing, um, water going across that property. Because the current is on the other side of the river. So what you really have on this side is an edge, you've got the back, the backwater, this water's spinning and. But actually, when the water comes up that level, it, it, it just goes straight across, it's, it's more of a nuisance than anything. It just makes a big mess that takes days to clean up, but, um.
Is this a primary residence for you?
No, and, but I do plan on retire, this is my retirement home, and that's why I'm doing this, I'm investing in this because I plan on living there. Uh, in the near future, so, uh, my house, I originally built it, it's, uh, four bedrooms, two baths. Great with the family, my kids moved out and now it's just my wife and myself. So we're planning on moving over to that house and, uh, she'd like to do that sooner than I would. And I keep telling her, well, let me fix, let me fix it the way I want it and then, and then we'll think about going over there.
So let's do the public hearing, otherwise we have to notice it because we didn't do the public hearing, okay?
She's just gonna open up.
Just open up though.
Don't need a motion for it, just?
No.
Okay.
Leave it open and then see, no, no public, we can close it.
So now we're gonna open it up for public hearing and seeing that there's no public, we're gonna close the public hearing.
Motion adjourned.
No, no, no.
No, now we have to do the discussion.
Okay, motion to table first.
I second.
All in favor?
No, no, hold on, let him read it back.
Motion to table made by Zoller, supported by Sheldon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay.
Nay. Whoop, no, that's not me, sorry. I said aye. To table, I don't know what I was thinking.
Motion to table carried.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Favor.
Give him time.
Motion to adjourn made by Zoller, supported by Sheldon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, uh, motion to adjourn carried.
Good job, Trevor.
Yeah, thank you everyone for taking time out from your busy schedules. And I'll go do my homework and I will be back.
Thank you, Wally.
Yes, thank you.
Lois, can you cut? You can go ahead over there, right?